All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, let's see. Sue, are you ready to go?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is City Council Work Session for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This meeting is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Uh, Counselor McBride. Okay, I'm okay. Thank you. Counselor Colfield.
Hither.
Uh, Counselor Yornell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Blancarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, folks, review of the council agenda and meeting anything um involving tonight's business session. All right, hearing none. Any council business items you'd like to bring up? You know, why don't I get, why don't we give right here, I guess, a quick update on the Committee on Subcommittee's? There we go. All right, so I'll I'll lead in, but so I know that's that's can't get more government than that, but there you go. So anyway, um, we met, so um, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Finley, Student Commissioner Bolick, uh, City Manager Weinheimer, and I met on February tenth uh, to go over actually the items that were listed in the December seventh uh packet on the discussion on committees. So our plan is to come back to you all on March first with at least the Student Commissioner portion. Um, and then after that with some additional ones as there was a list of items that we've gone through, so. Anything to add to that Denise or Stephanie, Dan? Okay, hearing nothing. We'll we'll be back to you all on March first for that. All right, now moving on to presentations. The steps forward sidewalks repairs. Shannon, good evening.
Hi. Uh, good evening. Do I have screen share capability, Sue? Yes, I do. Japro, thank you. All right. Is the presentation visible to City Council? And Steph?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Um, good evening. Thank you so much. It looks like it's a packed agenda for the work session this evening. Just kidding. Um, pretty light, but I'm excited to talk to you about a new idea or a new concept for workforce development. This is a this program that we're calling Steps Forward, open to a different uh a different working title, but the idea is that this is not just about sidewalks around Newburgh. It's actually workforce development for young people and people who are at highest risk in our community. We, um, should we choose to participate in this opportunity? We would be the second community in the state of Oregon to do so. So the goal this evening is to present the parameters to the program, uh, which is hosted through Willamette Workforce Partnership uh, to answer any council questions and to see if it's an opportunity that you all would like to move forward with an official resolution upcoming at a business session. So Steps Forward Sidewalk project introduction, as I had said, sorry, this is a collaborative workforce development um, program. We are working mostly through Willamette Workforce Partnership, but we have the ability to also partner with SED Core when it comes to outreach, uh, program, administration, recruiting employees or contractors or other business people. And so really, this is an opportunity for us to align with partners that we already work extensively with for community economic development campaigns. So the idea is that we're going to fix damaged sidewalks um, and teach careers in construction to local uh young people. The details of the project, so this is construction-focused skill development for youth, ideally ages sixteen to twenty-four. These are very broad parameters. Uh, we are looking to work with our highest-risk youth. Um, so this would be at-risk, low-income, or non-enrolled students, which is why you'll see in the program description, we have several different sources that we are um working with or partners that we are looking to contact with the to identify these young people. So that includes the Youth Outreach Program uh through Shahelem Youth and Family Services. That certainly includes the school district through Catalyst High School, Newburgh High School, either as as it says, non-enrolled or at-risk students for not enrolling and catching that age group where they can really start to take on some of the responsibility of a construction career, get to know the skill set, maybe even get some tools, get to keep those skill, those tools going into different careers after the experience. Uh, one of the goals actually of the program is to help our young people identify if construction-type careers are not something that that brings them joy or makes them happy. So looking at an exploratory process. What this program is not, it is not an apprenticeship or an internship for youth. It actually is regular full-time employment for our young people, where they do carry responsibility to master the skills and advance their professional development throughout the process. This is not a subsidized sidewalk repair program, although the partnerships and funding leverage do allow for replacement and repairs of sidewalks to happen at lower cost than normally would happen with contractors uh throughout the city or throughout the region. That being said, this is not a high-profit opportunity for private partners. The partners who would participate in this project are looking to actually build the quality of life for these young people. Certainly, there's the prospect that they would, they would find quality employees to move forward with after the programs were completed. But this is, this is not going to be a huge moneymaker for people who are involved. And this is not a city-owned project either. So what that means is we don't carry the liability for the program. We don't administer the program. Uh, Willamette Workforce Partnership has come to us with this concept, hoping that we will partner as other partners would, where we donate a portion or we subsidize a portion, we offer some sort of benefit that brings the project together collectively. But this is not actually a city of Newburgh project, which takes some of the heat, some of the sweat off uh, city staff and city councils if we choose to support this, but also gives us a good opportunity to build goodwill in the community and support workforce development. Supporting data, you can see that we expect even uh pre-COVID that construction career demand would only increase over the next decade. And that is specific to the mid-Willamette Valley um as well. It's a decent living wage, especially um, especially in consideration that it doesn't require any um second post-secondary education for students who are participating in. So you can see even a cement mason uh earns a mean wage of forty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars, which is a substantial income. So it's something proud to support, and that these data points are all very current from the state of Oregon Employment Department. How this project aligns with your city council goals, I um, it was, it was our interpretation that the closest alignment was within the council goal number two, to further develop an operational culture that adopts and cherishes D E I as core values. And you'll see uh in the administration of this program, because the program focuses on our highest-risk uh, youth who are disproportionately represented by low-income and minority backgrounds. Uh, we're really looking at increasing positive living wage opportunities for those uh community members. And then, of course, higher quality and safer sidewalks, um, more wheelchair use, or safety for those who are blind or vision impaired, and an increase in walkability in our city as well. Projected timeline, we started identifying uh potential projects in January of two thousand twenty-one, as well as um, conversations have been started with partner organizations. What that looks like on behalf of the city, those partner organizations are Willamette Workforce Partnership and SED Core. And then Willamette Workforce Partnership and SED Core have started to move those conversations forward as well, but that's part of their responsibility for the program, not ours. We have our council presentation tonight. Hopefully, we'll add a business session with a resolution. Late February, early March, we can start finalizing construction projects and um recruiting candidates, interviewing and hiring the workforce. And then hopefully later this spring, we can start construction. Municipality responsibilities. So this is the city of Newburgh's buy-in to the program. Uh, we have been asked to provide a no-fee dump site for project waste. Uh, Russ Thomas and Public Works have graciously agreed to provide that. We also have been asked to provide the Asian guidance for permit assistance and application of permitting fee waivers, which is uh where this would eventually come to a resolution ask before the city council. The cost analysis for a permit uh fee waiver, the permit fee is twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents plus twenty-nine cents per square foot of sidewalk project. One proposal that we are um considering for for this project is seven-hundred fifty feet of sidewalk with George Fox University that Russ Thomas was able to identify. So for the permit fee that we would waive for that entire project, it would be less than two-hundred fifty dollars. Sorry, I did the math incorrectly. I think it was less than seven-hundred fifty dollars. I did it literally ten minutes ago. And now I'm trying to calculate it again. Somebody have a faster math? I haven't had a math class since high school. True story. Less than two-hundred fifty dollars. There we go. Thank you. Bit of a panic. I like words, not numbers as much. Um, although competent with numbers, of course. All right, moving on. Uh, the other ask from the city is to communicate with property owners and to promote the project. The promotion and also identification of projects is not even a primary responsibility of the municipality, although we haven't been asked to engage in that. Uh, Willamette Workforce Partnership in completing this project with the city of Independence, Oregon actually found that it was a little more expedient and uh productive to promote the project locally along with city support. So we simply get to be the assistants to the bigger process here. Contractor responsibilities uh to teach these people about uh these young people about construction skills. Also to make sure that everything follows the regular process for a contractor, including permit requests, scheduling works, orders, scheduling materials, inspections, and then um also so that we can build this up for a duplicatable model for other communities. Um, evaluations and feedback conversations with youth. And again, this is not an internship. This is not an apprenticeship. This is actually an employment opportunity. So these young people, when they're identified, will be treated as employees. One of the differences between this and regular employment is that they do get a little more mentorship and guidance throughout the process. For example, Willamette Workforce Partnership and UPE will work with the uh with the applicants on interview skills, eye contact, showing up on time, appropriate attire for an interview, so they get a little more support. The Youth Services Provider responsibilities, UPE has a strong-standing relationship with Willamette Workforce Partnership, and that is their preferred partner for this. So UPE will manage the program with support from Newburgh Public Schools. And again, we're looking for a range of students who would like to explore construction careers. UPE will also identify funding resources, will create the application process, hold the interviews, coach the youth, um, help locate local supplies of small tools and P P E, provide a job site supervisor, so a liaison um with the contractor and the students, and then also communicate expect uh coordinate communications, expectations, and goals for each partner. Property owner responsibilities, allow for slow, yet quality sidewalk repair placement on their property. This is a first-time process for our new employees, and so we want to make sure that they're gracious. Uh, this is not going to be for a project that needed to be done yesterday. This is going to be a little more thoughtful. Showing patience, of course, with disturbance of earth and plant life, although it should be, it it will be a high-quality experience. Uh, Willamette Workforce Partnership has even talked about the need to identifying um an arborist and landscape architect to make sure that property is left in great condition. Of course, the property owners will pay for the balance of the project cost after partner subsidies are applied. It can take um a project that would have been a few thousand dollars to replace a small section of sidewalk and bring it down to a few hundred dollars. So it's a good deal. Um, and for those balances, our property owners are encouraged to apply this to the sidewalk repair programs through the city of Newburgh. And of course, I'm referring to both the grant and the loan uh programs that we have set up through the city. There are fifty thousand dollars in each of those fifty thousand dollar grant, fifty and fifty thousand of the loans. The loan is at four percent interest. They are first come, first served. I know we're already um amassing applications for that, but it is an opportunity to take care of a balance. And property owners do receive project estimates before the work begins. Desired private partners, uh, Willamette Workforce Partnership will work with SED Core to establish the uh private contractors and donors, and you can see the list that it would include. And of course, when possible, Newburgh area partners, contractors, and suppliers will be enlisted for project participation. That's not a decision we make as city staff, and it could be county-wide, but I know that the priority is to support local businesses, supporting local youth. With that, I will um open it up to questions or comments from the city council.
All right, Stephanie.
I love this, um, but I do have a few questions. So I think I caught this in your presentation. Um, but who is the first city that's done this? Um, I'm just interested to know who's doing it, so we can get a little more information. Um, and then my other questions are, what happens if there's not enough work? What happens to the employees? Um, if we hire them on and we find that we're not getting the work that we anticipated? Um, sort of how does that work? Do they cut down their hours? Do they uh see them onto a different job? How does that work? And then uh my last question is, or what if there's too much work, I guess, on both ends of that? Um, do they employ more youth? Um, or do they just do it as it comes? And then my last question is about how many employees do we um anticipate um in this program?
Those are great questions, Counselor Finley. Thank you so much. So the first city to work with Willamette uh Workforce Partnership. And I have to say, I think there was some much less formal iteration of this process several years ago, but the first time we've really stepped into this for what this program would be comparable in Newburgh was in Independence, Oregon. And it was actually just completed or just wrapped up this last fall. I don't have data on how that project fully matured, because they're still collecting data, and they're continuing to follow the youth who participated in the program to see if they did go on to develop. I've heard anecdotally that at least one person did go on to a construction career after completion. But I'm still waiting on figures on uh how many square feet of sidewalk were replaced or completed. Um, any exit surveys or or opinions from property owners. So that data is still forthcoming. We're really on the cutting edge. And there are actually six cities on a waitlist behind us if we choose not to participate in this opportunity. So it's a, it's a growing concept. Um, the other questions, what if there isn't enough work or too much work? Um, and how many employees? So I do want to clarify that this is not actually city staff. This is not a city workforce opportunity. This is something that we're supporting with the no-fee dump site, the waiver of permit fees, applications, and promotion of the program. So these are not actually employees. So I would imagine then that UPE and Willamette Workforce Opportunity are working within a standardized supply and demand model that if there's not enough work, then we have as many um employees to take to accomplish what we have. Likewise, if we have more work and we have the capacity to administer the program, then our partners would increase capacity and perhaps hire on more staff. Similar to how this operated in Independence, it's designed to be a temporary or a seasonal opportunity. So it already has a lifespan in it um built into it, and construction work is especially weather-sensitive. So the rainy season in Oregon isn't always great for getting sidewalks done, taking care of and cured in a timely manner. So there's a, there's a a natural timeline in there. If we find that we love this sidewalk project so much, and there are miles of sidewalk to do after this opportunity, we have Willamette Workforce Partnership, we could possibly be invited back as partners in future iterations of the program or in future years. And based on the outline that uh Dean Craig at Willamette Workforce Partnership and I have created for what this might look like in the city of Newburgh, we've even talked about looking at the next level of workforce development for these young people. So perhaps they come back a second or a third year and learn project management. So they work more closely with the contractor and learn how to schedule, learn how to contract, learn how to do um project evaluations or or different timelines. So there are different opportunities. Um, just from what I've heard internally from city staff with our residents who would really like support repairing sidewalks and several of our partners like George Fox University CPRD and the school district. Um, there are plenty of sidewalks to repair, and so I don't think there will be a shortage of anything there or more than it. So how many employees? I don't know. It depends on the capacity of our partners. It also depends on the interest of our young people. If we are able to find five young people who are interested and we have worked for twelve, it simply means we get to share this model with other communities perhaps, and maybe a Newburgh student would work in Lafayette. I don't know. Does that answer your question? Questions?
Right.
Yeah, I like Stephanie. Also, love, love the the program, the idea. Thank you. A couple questions. Um. First is, so you mentioned a focus on at-risk youth. I'm guessing this is probably something that UPE would be, if I'm understanding the partnerships correctly, UPE is primarily responsible for the care on the the student or youth side. Is that right?
Yes, actually. So the Youth Opportunity Outreach Program through Shahelem Youth and Family Services is already a f- a first contact point for youth experiencing um houselessness, homelessness, mental health, um educational challenges like non-enrollment. And so that becomes a frontline of contact for Willamette Workforce Partnership, but we also are able to work with Newburgh School District staff to internally identify at-risk students as well. So before they're non-enrolled, before they are in a more dire situation, perhaps there can be intervention, but that's generally how we're working with this, within this network. There's uh no reason why a student who is not at risk or not unenrolled couldn't also participate in this, but recognizing that it it is designed um as an adjustment in equity.
Yeah, no, I I love that. And maybe this is getting too too much into the weeds, and we can connect offline um to get more into it. But yeah, I love the idea. I think my questions are more around, like you said, if if it really is open to everyone, I think there's good reason. It sounds like an awesome opportunity. I'm just curious as to what the particular mechanisms are that would um intentionally connect, right, some of these identified at youth or at-risk youth to this program? Um, because I again, I love the idea. I'm just always curious about how that ends up occurring. Um, so yeah, if you know something off the top of your head, great. If not, like I said, we can connect offline, um, but figured I would at least ask.
Perfect. That's a great question. Thank you, Counselor Colfield. So some of the work that we've already done, city staff has already done in advance of this presentation is to make sure that Willamette Workforce Partnership and uh you were introduced to all relevant partners or people who already have contact with these populations of young people. And so we've already made um warm introductions between those agencies. They're already working together on this. And incidentally, other opportunities, actually, we ended up with a stronger relationship with the intern program at McMidlow Works from some of these conversations that that we started around sidewalks. So we got hopefully the right voices at the right table. Um, if in this process, there is somebody in the community who is identified, who would be a valuable, strong partner or has an access to a different uh subpopulation, then by all means, we would appreciate that recommendation. I do again want to remind the council that this process really is being managed by Willamette Workforce Partnership and UPE, uh, which is really appropriate for how city government functions and how private sector work functions as well. But those relationships are in place, and that's why we made sure that we had a range of community organizations, nonprofit organizations, contractors, economic development partners, and the school district.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, 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 I think to a degree. Um, two other things, one's relatively quick. You mentioned uh data, because you said it's super cutting-edge, which is exciting. Um, and I think around data, you mentioned exit surveys pertaining to um like the private citizens and their experiences, as well as long-term tracking um of students, which of course takes time. Like if it's a new program, you need time to get that data. One other piece of data that maybe you anticipated, but I didn't hear that I'd be interested in is what the experiences are of the students. All in all, sounds great. And if for some really weird, odd reason, these at-risk youth are having um terrible experiences, reverse experiences, like that would probably be good to know. Uh, I don't imagine that'd be the case, but that would just be one other piece of data that I think would be important to keep in mind. Um, and then my last question is around if there's a sort of expected or anticipated amount of work. I know Stephanie said it goes weird, like, what happens if there's not enough work? I'm more curious on the other side of like, how many sidewalks are we anticipating? Because twenty-nine cents per foot for seven fifty is not that much, but that's maybe one or two blocks. If we're talking like uh quite a few miles, that twenty-nine uh cents could probably add up relatively quickly. So I didn't know what the anticipated, or if there was a sort of anticipated amount of work associated with this program.
Excellent. Great. So with the first one of the question about, you know, the data coming in, yes, we are still gathering that, collecting that. I think what we also discovered in the process that we have an opportunity to do even better with Newburgh um is to collect more of that data, so that we're starting to get a a more comprehensive picture of what the experience is on all parts of the process. And so if you um in the list for or in the the responsibilities, both for the contractors and for the youth services provider, you'll see that both of those particular partners have a responsibility to engage with the youth on what that process is, providing feedback, providing uh guidance, support, mentorship, but then also an evaluation at the end. And this is an evaluation for the young people, for the benefit of the of the young people, for the benefit of the young people, but also for the partners. Was it a good partner for the tools? Was it a good partner for the contractors that we worked with? Was it a good partner for the concrete suppliers? So all of those relationships and individual partners will be evaluated at a more intensive level than we've seen with this program in the past. Um, as far as what if we have a whole lot of sidewalks that need to be repaired? This, you're right, this could get pricey even at twenty-seven, twenty-nine cents per square foot. Um, one of the reasons why we're starting this conversation as a work in a work session is so that we can get feedback from city council of what you'd like to see. And one opportunity that you may have is to set a price limit, saying we will invest in this program up to a dollar amount. And that can be correlated to the cost of permits and square footage that you agree to pay for. And then um any sidewalks that would be repaired around Newburgh outside of that dollar range, we can simply defer that to another year. That's one idea.
Yeah.
And I'm open to other suggestions.
For sure.
Mike?
Heard of folks. Oh, no, you're good. Great. I was saying.
Mike, go ahead. So I really like this idea, and I I would, I hope we do this. So are we looking at just this summer? Uh, that we would, if we decide to start this program, it would just be this summer. And if that's the case, do we have first rights to continue it on like next summer? Or or can we, if we decide to do this and it looks like it's really going well, can we sign a a long-term contract of three or four years to work with them? Because I I think this is a great way to teach young people, you know, really good skills that uh they can go right out into the workforce and and I so I just, I really like this idea.
Um, so if I understand correctly, when I double-check the the timeframe, when we're looking at this project, it's my understanding that, yes, construction would be from this spring through the summer and would complete this fall. Um, I certainly can't speak on behalf of Willamette Workforce Partnership, but I do know that they're excited to expand this program or to different particularly rural communities around Oregon, so that we can develop these skill sets independently, which is another reason behind this concept of maybe uh developing a second layer to the experience being invited back in a year two or a year three, so that our students who have experience can start to perpetuate that educational process. But I can't commit them to something in the in the future, and there is currently no precedent from Willamette Workforce Partnership that we would have preference for future years, especially because there is a waitlist behind us of communities who would like to engage.
Okay. All right, other questions, folks? All right, let's see. I've just got uh, well, one, obviously, you know, I love it. It it it's kids learning construction skills. It's near and dear to my heart, so there you go. Um, I think uh the only, the only thing I'm not certain completely of is is who will the employer be? Is are you gonna have a, I mean, like, a construction company that does sidewalks, or or how's that gonna work?
So the employer is actually UPE with Shahelem Youth and Family Services. So they will do all of the application, the screening, the interviewing, and they will administer payroll. And then UPE actually hires the contractors, the cements, the suppliers, the different skilled workforce people as well. So UPE becomes the the hub for all of the um financial aspects of the program, which is very tidy, very neat and tidy. Um, but also the administration of the program as well.
Right, thank you. Perfect. Um, and then the other thing is is a technical question. I know we've run into this in the past as to whether or not we have a mechanism to waive fees and um, because I know in the past that's been a sticking point. So that would be the only thing, but I assume that given this, that we we do have that mechanism. So um.
Mayor, this is Doug. Um, yes, the council, that authority.
Mayor, this is Doug. Yes, the council, that authority rests with the council to be able to waive fees, similar to what we've done on some selected occasions when there's been asked for a waiver of building permit fees or reductions. That's where Shannon was talking about a resolution would have to come back to the council in order to waive.
Okay. The only other, the only other thing is if we can influence, I know, you know, the, the low hanging fruit certainly is going to be George Fox, the school district and whoever else, right? That's the low hanging fruit. But if this goes out into the general public, I'd really encourage, I'd love to see some form of need put in there for those who are receiving this benefit. But again, I know, I know it would be easier to do a run at the school district or, or wherever at the college than it would individual homeowners. But if it ever came to it, I'd love to see some need built in. So, all right. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The experience in, in Independence actually was that the program was entirely residential. So it would be a new experience to work with George Fox University or CPRD or the school district. So we can start to play with those models and, and it's, it is meant to be a need-based program as well. So one of, one of the next opportunities will be to identify those projects. For this work session, before we conclude conversation, as a reminder to the council, I would like a specific recommendation or support from the council to approach you with a resolution regarding the waiver of permit fees for this program.
Well, I can, we can give you a thumbs up. We can't give you a decision during the work session, but we can all give you an indication. I think you've probably heard from a majority of us that, that I think we'd be willing to see a resolution if I can speak for the rest of the counselors. Okay. I think you got it. All right. Very good. Thank you. Thanks very much. Sorry, Bryce.
That's okay. And also Stephanie, did you have your hand raised again as well? You want to go?
Again, guys, I can't always tell. So if we're going to ask more than, no, if we're going to do more than one question, ask for a follow-on. And then I know that you're asking to ask more questions. So go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Rick said is not too long ago, we had a resident who had to repair her own sidewalk because cost was prohibitive. So I would really like to encourage that we really push and stress that this should be for residents. And I would also like to stress that if we are going to market this to having residents come to us and ask for this help, that we get it out in Spanish language first, not a week after, you know, or, or behind when we get the English speaking data out there. So those two things are important to me.
And Bryce?
Yes, love it. Stephanie, I have to affirm that. Last, last two things, I imagine you has already thought of this. So maybe it's more of just like a confirmation. The 16 to 24, because I was looking at the youth website, I think correlates with the groups that they work with, which makes sense. So just making sure that we are indirectly causing some students who otherwise, you know, might be in school to decide not to because they have this really awesome opportunity. Again, I'm sure you has already thought it through, but that's just one thing. And then the other thing, as long as like we get to make recommendations, I would be curious slash recommend that there be a level of, for lack of a better term, cultural competency, professional development included in what you is doing to prepare mentors, right? Because I'm thinking, for example, if I as a contractor and a Lakers fan and paired with a Blazer fan, I'd be a terrible mentor. And that mentee would have the worst time ever because I would tell them how awesome the Lakers are, right? Which in basketball is one thing, but if you have, for example, mentor who does not have significant experience working with at-risk youth, folks who've experienced houselessness, poverty, coming from, you know, culturally diverse backgrounds, what have you, that could be difficult. And so again, you might already be doing it. If so, great. If not, that'd be one recommendation is to make sure that there's a level of that development present for the contractors that they're working with, who would be mentoring these kids.
Thank you.
And Bryce, you are right. No one should have to be put up with hearing anything about the Lakers, honestly. No one, no one should. So. Right. The only, the only other thing, one more thought while I'm thinking about it, we have the safe, safe routes program. We have identified safe routes down to downtown to school. We've talked about it before. It, it would seem to me that if we really want to get this off the ground, particularly to individual residents, we almost mark where we'd like to see the sidewalk improved. I mean, I think we've already got that data with that. Don't we have that sidewalk identification program already? So that might be a place to, to start and actually solicit those homeowners and say, hey, this thing is super cool. How's about it? So just a thought, not to make more work, but just a thought. So. All right. Anything else? Bryce, is that hand up or is that, there we go. Anybody else? Cool. All right. Well, Shannon, thank you. Thank you so much. And we've got a little time, folks. Dan, how's about the city manager's report?
Sure. Yeah, I thought we might have a little bit of time. So I have a little bit of a report. So it would not be a city manager's report if I didn't talk about COVID. So I'll very briefly just say we're continuing to look for vaccination opportunities. That's kind of the update for now, which I guess is, is a good thing in the sense that maybe we're seeing some of the, the rates of infection stabilize. But we are working with the county and other folks' sites and, and offering as much as we can to be a vaccination site. If that's something that is going to help, but in any event, COVID vaccinations done. So the, the other big item that I would be lowest to not mention is the ice storm. And I, I guess I'm calling it an ice storm. I know maybe a winter storm for folks, but coming from Colorado, that was an ice storm. The, you know, really, as you all probably already know, Newburgh really did fare pretty well, avoided a, a lot of the significant damage and the power outages that we're seeing in other parts of the region. So from that standpoint, you know, feel, feel very lucky. Really, the operational side of it, just so you're aware, the Public Works Maintenance folks were on standby. They had several staff members from Thursday through Saturday kind of on standby. We have two four-wheel drive trucks that have snowplows and, and have sanding on capability and, and had sent those out a few different times to sand the roads. You know, really just trying to continue to monitor the conditions and, and coordinate with our dispatch and others for trouble spots and make sure that we're providing a level of safety in the community for those who were driving. Probably not, you know, unless you had to, probably not the best thing to have done during that ice storm, based on what I saw at least. But we, as I said, damage was pretty limited, trees and tree limbs, which I think the majority of the region saw as well. The other thing that to mention there is that because we were in a bit of a banana belt, you know, we were able to avoid a lot of this, the severe damage where neighboring communities are much more impacted. We have reached out through Public Works to offer assistance where we can. And right now I think we've not been taken up on that offer yet. But as this drags out a day or two, we may be offering some supplies and assistance and that sort of thing. And you know, also understanding that some of our staff are, are impacted by power outages and those kinds of things. And so kind of trying to balance the staffing load as well for those, both in Public Works and, and other departments as well. Other work, you will soon see the state of the city working on the video for that right now. And also paired with that will be an annual report document that Lacey and our consultants are working on, which is a nice wrap-up of 2020 activity. Just something to, I'm sure, look forward to. I feel like my outtakes are probably somewhat hilarious. Not always comfortable talking, reading a script, talking to a computer, but anyhow. The other thing is the budget preparation has started. I think we've mentioned that before, but just wanted to sort of share that that is ongoing. We're working on, staff have submitted their budgets. Finance is working to collaborate and with myself and Kezia. We're gathering all that information and really trying to, to get through some of those. We'll have meetings towards the end of the month with all the departments and, and go over their budget proposals. Try to decide on what we can afford to do and where that'll, what will go into the proposed budget. But I had mentioned as well, I think in our last conversation, that we were going to do some budget committee orientation. And I think that's tentatively scheduled for late March at this point. So we'll make sure that we, we've got that on your calendars shortly. One other thing that I did send out that I wanted to mention publicly, our finance department had worked with our billing contractor for a little while in trying to get Spanish language bill, bill language, I guess, you know, make essentially have the, the bill sent to folks who desired it to be sent in Spanish. Apparently that we're the first of their customers to ask for that. And so it was kind of a bit of a project. They, they were able to put it together. And so we did send out a bill insert to folks in the community over 6,000, 6,042 apparently. We got one taker. And so I am convinced that there are more than one, there, there would be more than one utility customer interested in this service. And so I'm both looking to council for some support and maybe if you can point me in the, the direction of a few community members who might be able to advocate as well, we'd love to, to plus up that number. You know, again, we sent it to 6,042 and we got one. So I think we can do better than one. But it was actually a really cool idea of finance to, to push for this, again, given the fact that apparently no one had. So want to make it successful. Just a few other highlights from other departments. The HR has been really busy with recruitments of late, mainly replacement positions for folks who've left the organization, but have done eight recruitments in the past month. Librarian, library shelver, police officer, utility tech one, utility tech two. And so, you know, rather busy in that, that department with managing and, and supporting the other departments in the recruitment process. It's actually been nice in some ways to lead to some innovations in our recruitment process. We're, you know, seeing enough of them to, especially with Kezia, who's new, managing some of that. She's able to put her stamp on some of those as well, which one of the things she's doing is, is encouraging folks from other departments to be involved and in some cases, members of public to be involved in some of these recruitments. And so getting a broader perspective and viewpoint into the process of hiring our staff. Also related to that, working on a new performance evaluation tool, which is, you know, a little bit of insider baseball for staff. But hopefully by making it easier and, and a little bit more effective, you know, folks will do it more. And, you know, we'll have a better feedback loop for our staff for that opportunity to improve. And speaking directly to customer service as a goal. So, you know, it's something I'm looking forward to seeing. In community engagement, I mentioned the, the state of the city and the, the digital format of, of the year-end report. Those are both coming, probably sometime around the 19th, 20th of this month. We're also working with George Fox students through one of the university's professors on a marketing campaign. The marketing campaign is focused on sustainability. And so the class is essentially spending the semester coming up with a campaign for us, focused on programs that the city offers to market those to residents. Also looking at the potential for other sustainability tips and those kinds of things to really kind of raise the level of communication around sustainability in Newburgh. And so again, a council goal. And so excited to have some help from the university on that, that project in particular. The library has been busy despite, again, they're continuing to be closed to the public. They continue to do book bundles and typically those are like four or five books that folks reserve online and come pick up. They, they essentially get the, the curbside service. The curbside deliveries started around December, middle of December, I guess. The last two weeks, so the first two weeks of the overall program, the last two weeks of December were 332 bundles to people's cars. This last cycle, the, the first week of February, they delivered 321 bundles to people's cars. So just in one week had nearly met that same total. So I think it's, it's been popular. It's keeping them very busy. They're apparently fulfilling bundles at, at their height and at a pace of about four and a half minutes per bundle. Essentially, you know, four and a half minutes between each bundle. And so they're probably getting their steps in, getting some exercise at the library these days. But you know, kudos to them for really supporting the community and, and making sure folks are still reading, especially on a snowy or icy day in Newburgh. Also just wanted to, in Public Works, mention kudos. Brett Sylvester is one of our utility tech twos in maintenance and was selected by his coworkers to receive their Norton Award. Not an antivirus thing, but it's actually in recognition of him as the employee of the year for 2020. And it's named after Ed Norton, for those of, who's maybe ever heard of or seen the honeymooners, character on the honeymooners TV show. But you know, kudos to Brett, you know, he's recognized by his peers. And really the recognition focused on his willingness to help with any other, anyone's job, an upbeat attitude, great customer service and hard work throughout the past year. So again, good job, Brett. Other items of note, I think that's, that's actually it. We will publish this and there's a lot of information, a lot of data, a lot of work is still going on, but just wanted to highlight those things. And, you know, we continue to work on, on the council's goals. You know, I think I rattled off at least a couple of new ones that I haven't talked about yet in the manager's report. So hopefully making some headway.
Right. Questions for Dan? Anyone? Not seeing hands, not seeing hands. Seeing a hand.
Sorry. Also, Mike, I know you're newer. I'll ask a lot of questions. I'll apologize in advance. Two, two questions. First one, I like literally did the shake my head emoji. When you talked about, I was in the first ones to ask about sending out bills in Spanish. It's a little bit concerning. Slash, you know, you give a little bit, I guess of the pat on the back. I'm wondering, you know, for those who receive their bills paperless, for example, because I know I get my bills through like email and it's all paperless. If there's an ability to just have part of it already translated. So instead of like soliciting, if it doesn't cost us really that much, because it's all somewhat automated to have it do that, like might, might be an option and that way folks can use it. If that's helpful for them, that, that could be an idea. I don't know. And then, yeah, talking about performance evals remind me, Dan, I don't know, at least since I've been here, obviously I haven't been here that long, but I don't know if we've done a performance eval for you sometime recently. So Rick, I don't know if that's you or Stephanie, because you're president or whatnot. But I know Dan, when you and I talk, I, I tell you every time, I think you're doing a great job. And I think it's probably important to, to get that feedback so that it's official and it's not just like Bryce's awesome opinion that you're doing a great job, but others get a chance to do that. So just something that came to mind that might be good for us as a council to consider is doing some sort of eval. However, one does that when a new city manager is doing it during COVID.
We had discussed that, I think, and, and there were, there was a request for some suggestions to the process. And so I know Allison Seidler, who had been our interim HR director, had come up with some suggestions. And so we could offer those because, you know, technically the council has three folks that they, they would give evaluations to. And, and I believe the process had been, and correct me, those who've been here longer, but my understanding is that it happened more or less on a somewhat rolling basis. And so one of the recommendations was to maybe put those evaluations together in a, a season or whatever, to make it easier for folks. You know, it's sometimes hard to track when you've got a lot of employees, when to give the evaluations. But I'm happily, I'm open to it. I'm happy to receive one. My, I believe next week is my anniversary date. And so, you know, I, I'm happy to receive one at yearly, your discretion. But, you know, we can provide some suggestions around what other cities have done for managers. So I, I know she's got that information.
Okay. Yeah. And I just, I just made a note actually while you were talking about that, to, to do exactly that. That is a, this is a council responsibility. So that is something that we'll, we'll get with Kez, Kezia and with Allison and get a format. And then, you know, you know, city, city attorney, probably not so much as a contractor, but, but certainly for, you know, for municipal court judge, we, we should do something. I can't, I can't remember. Or it hasn't been done in the two years I've been here, certainly. So anyway, so very good. Anything else, folks? All right. Not seen. Oh, there you go.
So are, are we at the end of the, is that what you're referring to?
I was just going to ask questions. Any questions on, from, for Dan on his report?
Okay. Yeah. So I, I guess in, in regards to evaluation, is that going to be something that'll just be sent out to all the, the counselors? is that going to be something that'll just be sent out to all the counselors? We provide feedback or? How how's that going to work?
Yeah, let us, let's, let us get with the HR professionals, so with with Kasia and with Allison and and see what they're, I think it's been done. I think Denise, it's been done by a subcommittee before, I think, in the past.
No. So it used to be, well, it used to be the HR director just sent them out to us and then compiled it all. And then we had a HR director who was not comfortable with that. So that became the role of the council president. And then we just stopped doing it. I don't know why. Probably because we lost the HR director, the mayor and the council president all at once.
Yeah. And I mean, it's certainly, and we, again, we aren't behind, right? Let's make sure we know that. So whoever in the public is listening, we are not shirking our responsibilities. Dan has not reached a year yet. I was corrected at the last meeting on that. So do that. But yes, it's something we take very seriously. I think it's very important for everyone and not the least of which, Dan, and also the public. The public needs to know where, you know, what we feel about our city manager and why. So let us get with the HR professionals. I'll get, you know, I'll, I'll make the, I'll reach out to them and then we'll figure out from there. And if it, if it then defaults to Stephanie or how, you know, whatever their rules are on that, we'll, we'll figure that out. I'll try to get back to before March one for our next meeting on where we are with that, if that's okay. All right. Anything else? Any other things for Dan? The only thing, Dan, I have is, and I may, I don't know if any of you other counselors remember this, but at one point Waste Management said that they would be interested in doing curbside composting, speaking of sustainability. And I don't know if that's ever been talked about again, but maybe those kids at George Fox could raise that. Just, you know, for what it's worth.
I can mention it to him.
Yeah, awesome.
I did, if it's okay, I just had, I just wanted to say kudos to Public Works. I know they worked really hard. And even though we fared pretty well, there was still a lot of work to be done. I know that I live by a really steep hill. And in the past, we've waited until a few cars have slipped down and they've come out and put up the barriers. But they actually had the barriers out on the sidewalk well ahead of the event. And so they just had to slide them in there. So I really appreciate that. It saved a lot of headaches, I know, at least in our neighborhood. So I I really appreciate that they were so on top of that. So thank you to Public Works.
Awesome. And then did we, did Dan, did you mention the employee of the year for the, for the, the police department?
Didn't.
No, okay, yeah. And her, it, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna space out on her name. Oh, no. But also, and I don't know if we mentioned, but you all probably saw, and maybe we mentioned this the last meeting, but you, you live in the safest city in Oregon. That's pretty darn remarkable. And not to, you know, not to speak ill of other communities, but like us, we go a second. So, you know, I, I don't know how, I don't know how much you can get better than first, right? So kudos, big kudos to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department.
Amazing.
Right. Big kudos. So there you go.
Great.
All right. Anything else here at? All right. Let's be back at it at seven o'clock and that's about seven minutes from now. We'll see it. Don't sign off, just mute and stop your video. This is the City Council Business Session for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. This meeting is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Blancarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Thank you, Rick. Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance play it, please.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Here we are. And let's get to item four A. This is Taste Newburgh, Visit Newburgh's Quarter Two Report. Good evening, Leslie.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Rogers, council and staff. I'm pleased to present Taste Newburgh's October to December twenty twenty quarterly report. And I think, Sue, are you gonna screen share?
I'm sorry, I was not prepared to. Did we have a PowerPoint from you? Okay. Um, I, if you have it on your end, I have set it so panelists can share their PowerPoints. I'm sorry, I just got back from vacation today and I'm.
Always listen. We do have the presentation in our packet, so we should be able to follow along.
Okay.
Yeah, just have it right here. No problem.
I just don't have my, my work laptop is broken and so it's out for repairs. And so I'm not sure I have the right technology, but I can try. So.
I can also see if I can find it here.
Sue, I just resent it to you.
Just a sec. Sorry, pausing for technical difficulties. Everyone play with their filters and zoom and turn yourself into your favorite respected spirit animal. Or however.
Where we would like to go on vacation.
Hawaii. I'm totally up for Hawaii. Could you tell?
I know. Using my basement. That's joke. Thanks, Dan, for laughing.
What, nobody else wants to go on vacation? Geez, I just got back. Go again. Okay, Doug has sent me, Doug, the ever organized Doug has sent me it. And I am bringing it up. And holding just a moment until I used to be in radio. Hold on just one moment while I fix this record. Or in my case, eight-track tape. It was a while ago. Okay, and there we go. Yay.
Good job. Okay, tell me when you're ready to drive.
Yes.
Okay, so next slide, please. All right. So for those new to hearing about Taste Newburgh, I've included this page in the report, which recaps our purpose, our mission statement and our board of directors as of Q four twenty twenty and our existing staff. So Mayor Rogers is filling in for Counselor Yarnell Holloman while she is up to her eyeballs in work. So we look forward to having her back, but he's doing a great job, like I said before. So this is a test. There is a mistake on this letter. So it's not really Sprinkles of Joy Bakery. It's Shaheilum Winery that the picture is, so. All right, next slide, please.
From that.
Yeah, wait a second, wait a second. Cool you back. Who is that little child over there? Can we go back one slide?
You know, I don't know who, Shaheilum Winery took the shot, so we didn't. Other way. Yeah, they took the shot, so I'm not sure who it is.
That's one cute kid. Baby in the world.
Gotta say, that's one cute kid. We need some, you know, I don't know, you need some credits on that or some kind of residual, something. You need some kind of something for that.
We have this picture a lot now.
Hollywood gets a hold of that, you're in trouble. All right, sorry, I digress. I will stop.
All right. So talking about our website, our primary asset, we have been busy updating the website regularly with fresh content, which includes adding new business listings, blog articles and events. We update, we upload all Newburgh and Dundee area listings to Travel Oregon's website and it then aggregates over to Lament Valley Visitors Association site as well as our own. So we get good distribution from that. We wrote five blog articles this past quarter. We focused on outdoor wine tasting options, a distillery trail, now that we have two distilleries in Newburgh, fall farm getaway ideas, holiday shop local campaign and sparkling wine options from Newburgh winemakers. Our total blog views were thirty-five thousand between web and social. We have a COVID and travel alerts resource page, which serves to provide visitor resources specific to traveler safety protocols, requirements and closures, as well as guidance on visiting restaurants and wineries and links to state and local resources. Our goal is to provide inspiration and safe travel ideas for Oregonians, as well as to provide evergreen content that Google will index. Next slide, please. And so from our analytics, our website launched in late March, some of you might remember. So it's now almost a year in existence. We are in the building phase of gaining website traffic as well as traction on social media. Our website sessions decreased by twenty percent over last quarter. And I'm hopefully thinking that that's attributed to seasonal visitor demand, or maybe the wildfires, not sure. We had a total of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine sessions. We had five thousand four hundred and five page views and an average of one point four minutes on site. During the same quarter in twenty nineteen, I think Mayor Rogers had asked me to compare it to the chamber. So the chamber during that quarter had seven hundred and fifty-one sessions, just to kind of give you a gauge of how we're doing. We believe their accounts will grow significantly once we are able to really generate traffic through paid marketing campaigns and get past this COVID fog that we're in. And it's starting to come, I feel. Our social media results reflect growth of fifty-one percent on Facebook and sixty-one percent on Instagram. Instagram has more followers than Facebook, while engagements are much stronger on Facebook. So we believe that our audience will continue to grow steadily based on our post-engagement strategy. Next slide, please. So hopefully you all saw our twelve shops of Christmas campaign that we ran in late November and December. We put this program together to support, to support local tourist-facing businesses and specifically retailers. This campaign encompassed media outreach, social media posts accompanied by a custom-produced video for each of the twelve retailers that we featured. The promotion kicked off on Small Business Saturday. Our Facebook reach was twenty-one and a half thousand people. Video views were seven and a half thousand. Our supporting blog article had over a thousand page views and a lengthy time onsite of three minutes. So hopefully that was driving traffic to other areas of our site. We were successful in gaining the attention of Fox Twelve and Coin, who produced broadcast segments interviewing Jennifer Sitter at Open Circumstance and Ariel from Lineage. I heard from three of the twelve retailers that it was their best Small Business Saturday weekend ever. So, and they attributed it to our promotions. So hopefully we'll be able to continue putting promotions out like that, that will keep driving traffic our way. Our goal is to create one promotion per quarter that will highlight a reason to visit Newburgh. Our current promotion, you might have seen, is Newburgh Truffle Month for the month of February. We are happy to collaborate with the Downtown Coalition and the Chamber and any other organization that wants to push our information out on their communication channels in an effort to share information far and wide. And sometimes you all will see emails that I send out to you in the hopes that you will push it out to your networks as well. Next slide, please. So our social media focus has included inspiring stories and videos, outdoor tasting and dining opportunities, day trip travel ideas, new business openings, including Sprinkles of Joy, Miss Hannah's Popcorn, Abigail's Gifts and Bellinger Estate and Maraviglio's Winery. We were delighted to highlight Newburgh Zombo Frere Winery was ranked number one of Wine Spectator's Top One Hundred Most Exciting Wines for twenty twenty. And Berkestraw Wines was named in the Top One Hundred of Wine and Spirits Magazine for twenty twenty. We're always happy to feature our restaurant partners who have been very creative with their to-go options and their outdoor dining areas. So we'll keep pushing that information out as long as, as long as we have that going. So we boost some of these Facebook posts based on strength of content and have been targeting specific demographics, kind of following the lead of Travel Oregon and who they guide us on where we should be marketing. So it's been primarily Oregon for the last couple of months. Travel Oregon is actually, will have their Quarterly Oregon Tourism Commission meeting on the twenty-third of February, at which time they will give us further guidance on marketing strategies going forward. Next slide, please. So we produce e-newsletters. We've sent out, we sent to tourism industry partners and that e-newsletter included information about Travel Oregon Small Business webinars. They've put on a series of webinars to help small businesses figure out how to navigate better in times of COVID. We also push out COVID relief resource information that's industry-specific, as well as Newburgh-specific items about new businesses, events, dining and wine takeout options. Our consumer newsletters have similar content where we highlight, we highlighted the Newburgh Downtown Coalition Holiday Market, the Ewing Young Fall Whiskey Festival, Shaheilum Valley Dance Academy's Newburgh Nutcracker Movie, Shaheilum Cultural Center and Gallery Exhibits, outdoor wine tasting offerings, dining takeout, winery classes, new business openings, that sort of thing. In November, we sent an e-blast also to tourism industry partners about Newburgh Truffle Month to gain their participation. We also communicated with our lodging partners about making sure that they took advantage of their free listing in the Travel Oregon Official Visiter Guide. So we were pleased to to see that we have open rates of about forty to fifty-five percent, which exceeds the industry norm and it just tells us that we're sending relevant content out. So we're happy for that. Next slide, please. So building our image library is a continual work in progress for us. This past quarter, we focused on capturing images of downtown cityscapes, diverse and or masked lifestyle shots, new businesses and fall landscapes. We produced twelve videos for the twelve shops of Christmas and we shot short videos promoting the Watercolor Society exhibit at the Cultural Center as well as Autumn in Newburgh. There were over eleven thousand six hundred video views on social channels. Next slide, please. So for public relations, during the quarter, we finalized a media resources page for the website. We also created an online media image gallery where we have, writers can download images directly if they're writing a particular story. We distributed press releases about the twelve shops in Newburgh and I recapped kind of what our results were there. We were asked for media assistance from Shaheilum Valley Dance Academy for their Newburgh Nutcracker fundraiser. Then, well, this is some, a little bit out of our lane in the travel land. We felt that it was on brand because they were taking that production online and that it might be able to push out to a wider audience and people who might want to know more about Newburgh. So our PR team wrote the press release and pitched out the media outreach and it resulted with coverage on KPTV as well as Fox Online and it was in print with the Oregonian and the Salem Stateman Journal. So we pushed it out also in our newsletter and our social media channels. And it's my understanding they successfully exceeded their fundraising goals. So we were happy to support that project. We had two media visits throughout the quarter. We find that the writers are mostly postponing their visits because of COVID. Total media coverage for June to December is as follows. We had twenty-five articles, hundred and seventy-six million online readership, two hundred and thirty-five thousand estimated coverage views and two point six two thousand social shares. Next slide, please. So in October, it was a fairly slow media month for us due to, I think, the wildfire and smoke issues in September. So we had two good articles mentioning the Allison, the Painted Lady and Patricia Green Sellers. Next slide, please. November picked up steam a little bit. We, hopefully you'll have a chance to read a few of the great articles that were published with mentions of Newburgh and area tourism businesses. Eighteen fifty-nine magazine wrote a piece that included lodging to wineries, a brewery and Good Company Cheese Bar, with another article that called out the Allison and we started to see media coverage of our twelve shops of Christmas. Next slide, please. So our December media mentions were mostly the twelve shops of Christmas. We also had a great article in Portland Monthly, which mentioned nine different businesses in downtown Newburgh, as well as the Newburgh Wednesday Market. Balance of articles really were Newburgh Nutcracker Movie and twelve shops. Next slide, please. Go back one, please. Thank you. So this slide you've seen before. It's not very pretty. This chart tracks net city of Newburgh receipts for lodging tax revenue per quarter, October to December. Receipts year over year are projected to be down forty-eight percent. I'm still waiting on the final numbers. Yes, but I'm fairly certain it'll. But I'm fairly certain it'll stay in that forty eight percent downrange. October was fairly strong from a hotel and vacation rental feedback, but November and December were slow. The Allison is only renting forty seven percent of their available inventory currently due to safety precautions as well as labor shortages. Vacation rentals are performing much stronger than the hotels, but some of the inventory has been rented out to long-term stays and then we don't collect TLT on any stays over thirty days. So while we wait the final Q four report and payment from the city, Doug has indicated that we are projected to receive approximately twenty five thousand dollars in TLT revenue for the quarter, which exceeds the city budget projections by sixteen thousand dollars. So we call that a one. Next slide, please. So one of our annual business plan goals is to nurture and support our community through tourism partnerships and collaboration through active engagement with our state, regional and county DMO teams, DMO standing for Destination Marketing Organization. We received and delivered COVID-specific training and hospitality education to our tourism industry business partners. The, although the fires were out in Yum Hill County, we continue to support the wildfire recovery efforts statewide by providing bi-weekly hotel room availability to FEMA through Travel Oregon for possible fire evacuee temporary housing. We are collaborating with Willamette Valley Visitors Association as well as Willamette River Keeper and Oregon State Marine Board on creating a Willamette River Trail presence regionwide through our DMO websites, educating river users on points of interest, safety protocols, paddle itineraries and more. We continue to promote the Willamette Valley Responsible Reopening Program to let visitors know that our local businesses are committed to appropriate safety protocols. And then lastly, our WAVA Race Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force continues to meet currently participating in bi-weekly tourism-specific educational sessions facilitated through an outside consultant. And kind of cool is the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association in partnering with us creating an RDENI toolkit that we will be rolling out in two thousand and twenty one, which will be tailored for industry partners and DMOS for training and education purposes. Next slide, please. So we meet regularly with Willamette Valley Wineries Association to stay current with winery events, promotions and marketing strategies. While the Thanksgiving and Wine Country events had to be canceled due to the governor's freeze, we supported the winery community instead by promoting outdoor and virtual tastings, retail sales, group site pickup and gift card sales. I volunteer on the Yum Hill County Tourism Partnership Group. The county board commissioners held a work session in December to consider this group's request for tourism economic advisory committee status. Approval was given, subject to review of the YCTP mission statement and bylaws, and we thought that that was moving forward, but with the change in commissioner, changing commissioners effective January first, it was decided that that was not going to be the direction that they want to head. They don't want to support standing up an economic advisory committee at this time. We also convened a meeting between Newburgh and McMinnville City and DMO leaders to discuss Visit McMinnville successes with their TLT marketing programs, as well as to learn about their stable table and how each organization fits within the city economic development initiatives. Next slide, please. And now to the budget. So Taste Newburgh's actual revenue share of TLT received in the second fiscal quarter was forty five thousand dollars and change. This amount reflects what was paid for the July to September quarter. It, it just posted in October. So that's, it's always showing a quarter in arrears when it posts. So we continue to control expenses as much as possible. Our biggest expense line items for the quarter were payroll, public relations, photography and website. Marketing campaign expenses are on hold for the most part while we wait for COVID conditions to allow us to do more outbound marketing. Fiscal year to date, TLT revenue is up two hundred and ninety three percent to budget, which is great news. And you're probably saying, oh, really? How's that possible? Well, the first quarter we budgeted zero. So anything above that was great. And so that helps to contribute to the, to being up that far. So the balance of the year budget is aggressive as TLT revenues would need to exceed the five-year average. These are pre-COVID years. By, we would need to exceed by seventeen percent to come in at the budgeted TLT revenue. So keeping that in mind, I, I and the Taste Newburgh Board discuss our financial positions on a monthly basis so that we can manage appropriately into the next fiscal year. With vaccines in our future, travel sentiment is beginning to shift and we should be poised and ready to take advantage of these travel trends. So. Next slide, please. So that's the end of my spiel. I hope I didn't put anybody to sleep.
Oh, not at all. All right, folks, questions or comments? And I'll try to see if I can see any hands up. All right. Well, speak up, folks. If I can't quite see you, speak up. There's Bryce. All right.
Leslie, love it. Thank you. That picture, obviously the cutest. That's a win. Flattery works on me every time. So just know that. Um, I only had one question, uh, which maybe can branch out to larger questions. In terms of the, the twelve shops, do you know what the process was to highlight the twelve shops? I love it. I mean, it seemed like it was really beneficial for a lot of the individuals who were highlighted and looked like it got a lot of local sort of attention as well. So I'm just curious about the process through which the twelve shops were selected.
Well, you know, I have to tell you that that campaign came together rather quickly. So, you know, my PR team kind of conceptualized the idea and reached out to, you know, they, they did a walkabout to see which of the retailers were featuring local product because that was part of the whole purpose was to feature local and to tie in with Travel Oregon, who was doing a shop local statewide push. And so that was kind of what informed the choice of the retailers was those who we found had local products that we could highlight.
No, that, that's awesome. Uh, one question that came to mind, um, you know, particularly around DEI is how you might use the, the power you have, which sounds like it's great, right? Like what you are trying to do in terms of bringing attention, you know, to local shops. I think my question was like, how many other shops, you know, are owned by folks of color? And how might, you know, you use it as a platform to highlight some of the good work and whether it's, you know, specific gifts or like food, I'm thinking of like Gonzales's, I know is really good and dope or a Cappito. So I think it's El Burrito now, um, has also really good food. And so that could be, you know, something that hopefully you do again in the future because it seems really successful. But to highlight some of the businesses owned by folks of color in Newburgh.
Yeah, you know, it's an interesting question and it was something that I about, I don't know, gosh, three months ago now. Um, I don't know if Shannon's on the call, but, um, I was trying to get that information about Newburgh-owned businesses. And I learned that, um, and I think Mayor Rogers, you sent me some, a resource too, if I recall. But I could not find, I only found one business that was minority owned in Newburgh that was listed on the resource that, that Mayor Rogers sent me. So then I reached out to the city and spoke with Shannon. And she said, it's not something that's requested on a business application. And so, see, I knew she'd pop up.
Thank you, Shannon.
Um, so yeah, well, you know, we would love to have that information. And, and like you said, I found, um, one business and, and I know that that's not the case. And so, and I think I'd actually reached out also to Counselor Martinez Plan Carte about that too, to see if there's some sort of resource that we could tap into. So I think that that's something that, that I would throw back to you guys to say, hey, is there a way for us to collect and gather this information? That'd be awesome.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. That data is good to have. Yeah. And if you remember what that one business is, let me know. Love to promote it.
It's the, um, it's, was it GW? It's the food truck. GW BBQ?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The, uh, I think it's like a Haitian, uh, Caribbean barbecue. Real good, by the way. Their pulled pork smoked mac and cheese, straight fire.
It's so good.
We'll get it.
I haven't had dinner yet. So would you all stop now? Well, anyway, but I think really literally that's, this isn't the first time that we've heard that we don't have that data because we haven't tracked it. Right? And so that, that goes for, you know, uh, people of color that, that work for the city of Newburgh. That goes for, we just heard, you know, one person wanted Spanish bills in Spanish. So I mean, I think that's, this is an opportunity to start, like you say, start collecting that data as new business applications come in. So there you go. All right. Other things for Leslie, folks. Anyone? Right. Leslie, I think you're off the hook. Thank you. Thank you so much for all you do to, to promote our community. Greatly appreciate it. All right. Moving along, uh, for those who weren't a part of the work session earlier, we did hear of our city managers report. So let's move on to item six and I believe we have someone waiting for public comment. I believe Officer Heather Foltz.
Yes. Um, I'm going to promote her now. I have two Heathers on the right. So hopefully this is the correct one. Heather, there she is. Okay. Um, speak or do I need to? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for having me. So for those who, who don't know me, uh, my name is Heather Foltz. I'm a police officer for the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. And I'm also the, um, association vice president. And so I'm going to read a letter on their behalf. The Newburgh Dundee Public Safety Association would like to convey in the strongest of terms our tremendous support for Jeff Cosmickey Department. Growing up, Cosmickey spent many summers in Newburgh and working in his father's restaurant. After graduating from North Eugene High School, he moved back to the area and met his future wife, Kristen. They have four children who grew up in Newburgh and all attended the Newburgh Public School System. Cosmickey earned his bachelor's degree in business administration from George Fox University. He possesses an executive certification from the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training and is a graduate of the two hundred twenty first FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. In nineteen ninety seven, Cosmickey was hired by the city as a full-time police officer. In nineteen ninety eight, he was moved into a detective position where he was primarily responsible for narcotics investigations. During this assignment, the police department partnered with the countywide drug team known as Ysent. In two thousand and three, while assigned to Ysent, Cosmickey was promoted to patrol sergeant. He was assigned to patrol for nearly three years before being reassigned to supervise the Ysent team for a year. In two thousand and seven, Cosmickey was promoted to lieutenant. Operationally, this assignment included supervising the Special Investigations Unit, Evidence Facility and the City's Animal Control Division. Cosmickey oversaw several high-profile cases in which, um, that got some substantial media coverage. Many of these cases resulted in successful prosecution and or outcome. Throughout his career, he has played a key role in the city and county management, emergency management accreditation, police policy manual, police officer hiring and the Yum Hill County Major Crime Response Team, public relation team and the department's public information officer. In two thousand and ten, Cosmickey was promoted to the rank of captain. And since two thousand and seventeen, Cosmickey has led patrol division and has overseen all operations of the police department. Under Cosmickey's leadership, Newburgh Dundee Police Department saw the creation of a forensic computer lab. Our computer forensic detectives possess the highest level of training in the country. As a result of this decision, the NDPD has played a large role in assisting in cases throughout the Portland metropolitan area. These agency assists resulted in profit for the city when contracts were created for the forensic lab work. At Cosmickey's direction, officers have received more training and topics including force response, crisis intervention and community placing. NDPD was able to procure new and advanced equipment. This equipment is essential for the safety of our officers. Additionally, the new equipment gives officers the ability to deal with dangerous situations through less lethal means. Cosmickey led the creation of special teams like the Mental Health Response Team. The team has partnered with Yum Hill County Community Outreach Services. Together, they focus on suicide prevention and citizens in crisis. Cosmickey partnered with the Unidos where he created a relationship and information conduit with the Hispanic community. In two thousand and nineteen, as a result of Cosmickey's leadership and proactive efforts, he was recognized with the city of Newburgh's Visionary Award. To all who know and work with Cosmickey, it is clear that he is an innovative progressive leader who is open to change and ingenuity. Since April seventh, two thousand and twenty, Cosmickey has served the citizens of Newburgh and Dundee as the interim police chief. Beyond receiving awards and accolades, Cosmickey's success can be measured best by simply stating he has the unanimous support of the middle management and members of the Newburgh Police Association. In the past, the support has not always existed. This trust and achievement through Cosmickey's leader, through his leadership. He has a long record of instilling confidence in others and delivering when he says he will do something. The Newburgh Dundee Police Department is an excellent agency. This department has been very successful in providing the highest level of police services while keeping pace with the societal changes confronting modern day policing. Behind the scenes, Cosmickey has played an integral and significant part in the success of the department. When it comes to the ability, experience, leadership and integrity, Cosmickey is second to none. The members of the Newburgh Dundee Public Safety Association have the full confidence in Cosmickey's ability to lead our department into the future. Sincerely, the members of the Newburgh Dundee Public Safety Association. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Officer Foltz. Thank you very much. Um, and I, I will run the risk of saying it again. But thank you for all you do to now make us the safest city in Oregon. And that goes to, to all of you and all you do every day. So please stay safe out there. And, uh, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. All right. Um, let's move on. Issue tracker, Dan, do we have anything on the issue tracker?
We don't necessarily, although, uh, there was some research done on the one item that was brought to us about fire pits. And I think we'll do some outreach on that to TVFNR and try and work out some relationship there around, uh, the, the inspection process. Uh, there's a clause in their agreement with us that allows, well, generally, uh, with all of their, uh, areas that they serve that allows them to, uh, provide service when they can. And as you recall, the complaint, uh, the complainant had, uh, complained during the firestorm that we were having. And so I think that the decision likely was made by TVFNR that they didn't have personnel. And so, you know, there's been some additional research on that, but I think ultimately the, the bottom line is we need to work it out with TVFNR. So we are able to make sure that we do have, uh, that communicated to residents, uh, who's responsible and how to, uh, bring complaints, complaints like that forward. So, um, consider that one, I suppose, researched. I'm not sure it's been resolved yet.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, let's move on then to item number seven on your agenda. This is the consent calendar. All right. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Okay, second, then Mike with a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. We are now on to new business, item eight A, the NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability for the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this is our annual NOFA and notice, we typically do this in the fall. As we've shared before with council, given the Affordable Housing Commission's focus on working on the construction excise tax, we delayed that until the first part of two thousand and twenty one. So the Affordable Housing Commission did meet on January twenty sixth. Basically, we have the templates already in place. The, uh, issue for the commission is to look at, based on the money that we have available, uh, how does it get allocated? For some of our new counselors, there is an, uh, adopted resolution on the operating, uh, principles and protocols and guidelines. So it's kind of prescriptive within those guidelines itself about how we do this. It's always important to note, and I know the mayor is aware of this because we've talked about it before, is that every year the median family income number goes up because we're part of the Portland MSA. So for two thousand and twenty, it was ninety one thousand two hundred dollars. But that does play into funding capabilities for this particular program. So what we have this year is forty five thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars that is available. We basically have allocated that down to twenty two thousand nine thirty two for the competitive loan program and eleven thousand four sixty six for the rehabilitation loan program. And then eleven thousand four sixty six for and then $11,466 for the time-sensitive program, and then $19,110 for the time-sensitive grant program. We did have a conversation with the Affordable Housing Commission. We don't always fund the grant program. Now, part of the issue is that we have limited funds within this trust fund. And giving grants, that means it reduces the pot of funds that are available. The last time we went out for a grant was in the spring of 2020. Unfortunately, we were in COVID, and we did not get any applications for that. So your package has the RFP, the Notice of Funding Availability, a notice that needs to go to the graphic. Information would be posted up on the city's website. I think one of the important components of this is we would get this posted and out, you know, within the next couple of weeks. We're shooting for March 1st. The application timeline would close on May 31st of 2021. Since we're at the end of the fiscal year, by the time we get applications, the commission would review those. We would re-budget these funds for next fiscal year if there is an award. It's always important to note that the commission makes recommendations on any grants or loans. And then that comes to the city council, and the council makes the final determination. So what we're requesting this evening is a motion that's in your RCA that you move to approve the content of the 2021 Notice of Funding Availability for the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as shown in Attachment 1, and authorize staff to proceed with notification and publication of a NOFA with a May 31, 2021 application deadline. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Doug, folks? All right, Mike.
So Doug, where's the money for this program? Where's it come from?
It actually originally came from Community Bill Development Block Grant Funds. And it's similar, it's called Fund 14, the Economic Development Fund. So it was seed money from CDBG, back when the program was created, just before I arrived here. Is that they pulled $75,000 out of the Economic Development Fund and used that as seed money for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we've looked over the last five years, six years now, ways to replenish and add to the dollars that would be in that fund. Unfortunately, when we go out and look at foundations, they're funding specific projects, not a general overall. You know, could we get $50,000, put it in this fund, and then make local determinations? Unfortunately, the foundations generally don't award funds that way. They have some very specific purposes. Again, for some of the new council members, you did adopt a construction excise tax. In November of 6th, November 16th of 2020, that ordinance took effect. On December 16th, we started the implementation on January 2nd. So that construction excise tax is also in Fund 14. And there's one where we'll have to do some reformation of the trust fund and with the Affordable Housing Commission, now that they have some new responsibilities to provide recommendations on the construction excise tax. So that the pot of money counselor is going to grow as we work to try to partner and address housing affordability within city of Newburgh.
Other questions? Bryce, did you have a question? No, okay. Anyone else? All right, yeah, Mike.
So I was looking through the packet on this, and that, you know, we've got a listing of all the different things that apparently this money could be used for. Purchase price and appraisal costs and you know, it kind of irritates me that we're going this direction instead of, you know, trying to, I guess, help people find better jobs by creating better jobs in this community. And that's, I don't know. I just, I just think that we get people used to getting some type of government handout of some sort, instead of, I wish we would put more effort into creating and trying to bring in some better jobs.
Well, I think, counselor, you know, the affordable, this particular trust fund is to address housing affordability, so it's not jobs. It's, I'm not sure why, when the fund for this was created, that they stuck it in the Economic Development Fund. It's kind of an odd place for it. And I've had conversations with our past finance director, and I've already had a conversation with our new interim finance director about, you know, should we do this differently? So it's very clear that the trust fund is for affordable housing purposes only. And by the way it was set up, you cannot use it for economic development.
Well, I understand. I understand that part. But the thing is, if you want affordable housing, you gotta bring in some, some good jobs that gives you the opportunity to be able to afford the housing. Because where we're at here in Newburgh, we're always gonna have pressure, because this is such a nice centralized location. And I don't know, that I would like to see it go into a different direction a little bit, but that's, that's my personal opinion.
Mike, if I, if I could, just a couple of things. I know this money in the past has been used for things like renovation of existing manufactured homes, for instance. We've got 600 units in town here. Many of them are, that are older than 1978, so you can't get any money to repair them. So a lot of these folks are really, that's their only existing asset. And that's really, if we were to lose those 600 units, we'd be in very difficult straits. The other things I've known over the years is that all of a sudden, it's not so much even, it's hard now for employers to retain workers because they don't have an affordable place to live in Newburgh. So they're coming from farther and farther away. So, and this is where this idea of workforce housing really comes into it. But, but anyway, you're right, that, that jobs are key and important, and hopefully the mill site will give us that. But we also need, I think, to make sure that we take care of the folks that are here now and that are struggling, so.
I, I totally agree with that. Are, are we, do we have a mechanism to where we can identify and be able to reach out to those people and go, okay, we have this money here, and this is what it can be used for, and how can we help you maybe apply for it? Because maybe they might, if they're older, the older generation, then it might be a little difficult for them to go through a process, depending on how complicated or long it is.
So in that regards, is that when we do the NOFA, we put a notice in the paper, we put it on our website, and we push things out through social media. I also reach out to the housing authority, to YCAP, share information with them so they can push it out through their conduits and channels with the constituents that they interact with on a daily basis. So that's basically been the model that I tweaked over the last couple of years to try to get this out more and more. You may also remember, and the mayor brought this up, is that we did change the guidelines for this program to be able to use some for manufactured homes. We also applied for a CDBG grant in 2016, and were awarded $400,000, where we specifically, the funds went to do repair work on manufactured homes. And the council, back in December, authorized me to apply for another CDBG grant, which we now have that material in for a $500,000 grant. And that also runs through the same Affordable Housing Fund. So we're doing a number of different things to try to address from our manufactured home, our affordable for very low and low income and moderate workforce housing is a big discussion that we're going on. And then the other piece, counselor, and I think it would probably be beneficial for you and I find some time to just talk about what we're doing on the economic development front. There's a lot of things we're working on down in the riverfront area with our housing needs analysis, our economic opportunities analysis. We've done a lot of foundational work in the last couple of years to set the stage to reposition us so that we can get those better paying jobs.
Okay.
All right, and one clarification, I will recuse myself from this vote just because of my, my day job with Habitat for Humanity. So I will recuse myself from that. So, all right. Any other, any other questions or comments for Doug? Hearing none. How's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the content of the 2020-2021 Notice of Funding Availability for Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as shown in Attachment 1, and authorize staff to proceed with notification and publication of the NOFA with a May 31st, 2021 application deadline.
Second.
And Elise with a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your left hand. All right, and I, and Sue, I'll recuse myself from this one. Thank you. All right, and that passes. Moving on to item 8B, Resolution 2021-3720, a resolution accepting a Newburgh public and semi-public land need 2021-2041 report. Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Sue, PowerPoint, please.
So you, oh, there it is.
All right. So as the mayor indicated, this is our public semi-public land need for 2021 through 2041. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Toto is being cranky. That's the name of the computer.
That's okay. So through this process, we had conversations internally with city staff to determine what our city land needs would be over the 20-year horizon. So we had conversations with Public Works, the library, and then we went back to some other documents. And so you can see that there's about a need for 14 acres of land in the future, you know, for public works, which ranges from water booster pumps and wastewater booster pumps and a regional water quality facility. We looked at the library, potential future expansion. City Hall has been talked about in the past for future expansion. And then downtown parking lots, which really comes out of our downtown improvement plan. So what was identified is a need for about 15.4 acres of land for the city over that 20-year horizon. And in this table, you can see on the right-hand side, the comprehensive land designations where those activities would occur. Next slide. We also had conversations with Yamhill County and ODOT. So Yamhill County Transit needs about two acres of land over this 20-year period. One acre of that is for a place to park buses, and the other one acre is for a park and ride lot. And we've identified that that would likely occur down in our commercial area. For ODOT, their needs within our urban growth boundary was for 11.1 acres of land for Phase 2 of the bypass. And so they have been acquiring property as part of Phase 2, both inside and outside the urban growth boundary. What's left within our current UGV is 11.1 acres. Next slide. Then we had to go to parks. And in this, we use the methodology that's in CPRD's Parks Master Plan, which a portion of that, of that methodology is in our comprehensive plan. And so that need is 20 acres for neighborhood parks over the 20-year horizon. That's additional to what is currently within the community. And then 40 acres of community park. So that came to a total of 60 acres of land. Next slide. Conversations with Newburgh Public Schools over the 20-year horizon is they had no additional land needs. Next slide. The final category in this is the semi-public. And so primarily, this is churches, but it does include nonprofit organizations. And again, the methodology on this is based upon acres per thousand population. And from that, we identified a need for 28 additional acres of land for churches and four acres for other semi-public uses. So that came to a total of 32 acres. Next slide. So in total, the public and semi-public land need came out at 120.5 acres. You may ask, why is this important? Well, this analysis feeds into our housing needs analysis and into our economic opportunities analysis. Next slide, Sue. There are three definitions that we also want to add into the final report that's before you, and that's some definitions in regards to neighborhood parks. And so for this, we again went back to CPRD's master plan. And so neighborhood parks are from a half an acre to five acres in size, kind of that average is two and a half. And the attributes that those parks have are listed here with playgrounds, basketball courts, multipurpose, picnic tables, irrigated open space, accessible walkways, and so forth. They usually don't have restrooms, and they don't have parking lots. And so we want to add this definition into the parks section of this report. Next slide. Did the same with community parks. They have a range of five to 20 acres. The average kind of size is 10. They kind of take the neighborhood park, and then you add in some additional buildings and parking lots and restrooms and so forth. This is the attributes in that type of park. Next slide. And then finally, the definition of kind of paths, trails, and linear parks. And so we do have linear parks or trails and so forth. So think about our stream corridors. And so this definition helps identify what those are. Again, verbiage is taken from the CPRD Parks Master Plan. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-3720 with the addition of the three definitions that were presented this evening. And that's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions for Doug, folks? And if you're gonna raise a hand, I'm gonna have to see if I can see y'all. There we go. All right. Any questions or comments for Doug? Mike?
So is, I, I don't know if I, if I know the answer to this or not, but maybe you do. Is there a, is there a law that we're supposed to adhere to, or we've got to have so many acres within our urban growth boundary? So is, is this kind of what we're, we're looking at then, is, is planning that out for on down the road?
Yes, Counselor, that is correct. So as part of Oregon's land use system, one of the things that we have to look at is, is parks and open space. And so in this situation, Shaheilin Park and Recreation District has a master plan, a Parks Master Plan. And their methodology comes out of the National Parks Association. And so there's a table in that Parks Master Plan. That table has been embedded in our comprehensive plan. So that as the community grows and expands, that we know that we have this range of acres of parkland in these different categories that are necessary to serve the growing population of the community. And so there's a legal precedence for that, is that we have to have the parks plan, have their piece. We put the table in ours, and that's the link between the two for us to be, to do this analysis on the public semi-public, which then feeds into our housing needs analysis and our economic opportunities analysis.
Other questions for Doug? Doug, I have a question or two. So are we present deficient in any of these in semi or semi-public or public lands now?
I would say by the analysis, we're right on that tipping point.
Okay.
When I looked at some numbers a couple of years ago in regards to just parkland, we had a deficiency in parkland based upon our population projections at that point in time. So again, so, but remember, this is looking at 20 years into the future. So this is additional parkland that we need above what we already have within our urban growth boundary. So if we were to expand the urban growth boundary, there would need to be some land set aside for additional parks.
Yeah, you know, the, well, the reason I ask is not so much, well, it's just because of the baseline, you know, if we're, we're trying to catch up. I'm not so much on this, if you say we're, you know, we're close to the tipping point, but for other areas and other types of, other types of land usage. And then is, and then the parks plan for, for Springbrook Properties, I know, now I know that's up in the air. Is that included here?
Oh, that's, you must have talked to Charlie. Charlie's, Charlie's confused. So these are two different things, okay? The parks analysis is based upon population, is population-driven. And so we didn't go in and catalog the acres of existing parks. What we do is we say, here's our population today. Here's our population that will be 20 years from now, based upon the PSU population projection. Then we go back to our comp plan and look at it and says, okay, a neighborhood park is you need X number acres per thousand population. And so through that analysis, our consultants concluded the numbers that we came up with tonight. And so through that analysis, our consultants concluded the numbers that we came up with tonight. Springbrook Properties is private parks. They're not public. That's a different issue that we'll get into when we're talking about the housing needs analysis.
Fair enough. Well, not to belabor it too much. But if we are talking about needing additional land for churches, when we have thirty in Newburgh, that's where the, the existing numbers do influence future numbers. Anyway, but that's, that's neither here nor there at this point. But I, I'm just saying that the population is not the whole driver, depending on where we start from. But we'll leave that for another day. We'll leave that. All right. Anyone else? Other questions or, or comments for Doug? All right. How's about a, how's about a motion? You saw the staff recommendation. What about a motion? Stephanie's reaching.
Yeah, I reached. Okay. I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash three seven two zero.
With the amendments of the three definitions.
Yes.
All right. And do we have a second?
Second.
I just saw Jules. Okay. And Jules, it is. Any, any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All right. Moving on to item eight C. It's a surprise. It's Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. So Doug Rux, Community Development Director. This is my last one for the evening. So this is a resolution initiating amendment to our municipal code title fifteen. So this relates to the Riverfront Master Plan area. So back in November, you held the hearings to deal with the comp plan changes, the zone changes, development code changes to implement the Riverfront Master Plan. There's one final step. There's another section of the municipal code in regards to annexations. And when we created the mix comp plan designation, we need to add that mix into a table in the municipal codes. At the time that an annexation applies for is that it automatically gets that mixed designation unless a property owner wants to choose to do something else, some kind of different designation. So this one's pretty straightforward. It doesn't require that you make any decision on the application. At this point, you're just initiating the process. I would go back through, prepare the material, present it to the state. Then would go to the planning commission for a public hearing and their recommendation. And then this would come back in front of the city council for a public hearing.
All right. Any questions for Doug, folks? Just, just one for, for, to remind, you know, on annexations, Doug, and I know it doesn't impact this necessarily, but I mean, that does stand, isn't it? Ten acres and you have to have a certain amount of high density or we see where that's on the books, right?
We have a provision in our comprehensive plan that says that if you're annexing fifteen acres or more net of land that's taking out stream corridors for residential is that ten percent of that land area needs to be for high density residential. So it doesn't apply to an industrial or commercial. We have, the other component of that provision is that if we do urban growth boundary expansion that's greater than fifteen acres is that ten percent of that land area as well has to be for high density residential.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any, any further, Bryce?
My space bar isn't working. Quick question, Doug. So again, if we, you know, move forward with this, again, it doesn't approve anything. It effectively releases the planning commission to hold a public hearing. Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah, what it does, Counselor, it authorizes me to do the research, prepare the report material, submit it to DLCD, then go to the planning commission, hold a public hearing on the proposal. They would then make a recommendation, whatever that is. Then that recommendation comes to the council as a public hearing for you to make a final determination.
That's great. Thank you. Also forgive me for dismissing all the work that would go in before reaching the commission. I don't, I want to acknowledge that. I know it's a lot of work. Um, my question is around the, the public hearing right now. Are there any requirements in terms of, I'm imagining, no. But just to be sure, around like how much participation is required, you know, at that public hearing?
We, we have obligations in our code. So one is we have to put a notice in, in the paper. So we have to put a notice in the graphic for the planning commission hearing and the city council hearing. This would be a legislative change. So we don't have to notify property owners, but we do have a requirement. We have to post it in four public places. And then it also gets put onto the project page website under community development that is accessible.
I see. Um, in pre, because I imagine we've held similar hearings in the past, obviously not to this one specifically per se. But my, my worry, again, I think this should move forward, but just want to make sure that folks are notified because it seems like after this point, you know, the public, after the public hearing approved, like things are off and popping. And so, you know, even though we're not legally required to notify property owners, in your opinion, would it be bad practice to, to notify them, even though we don't?
Well, so we have two different processes and James is aware of this. So we have a legislative process which has one set of notification requirements. And then we have a quasi judicial, the site specific or just several properties where we have a different notification requirement to do. Let me give you, and then we have another requirement. We have another process. If we're doing legislative changes that affect many properties, we have a measure fifty six notice that we have to mail. So as an example, when we're working on the middle housing, which is coming up, is that that will require a measure fifty six notice. That means every property owner in the city that has a residential plan designation of R one, R two, R three, RP or airport residential, they will get an official notice in the mail from the city. So different processes have different notification requirements. In the context of this specific one, there's one property owner that this would impact.
Oh, all right. And my guess is this one property owner probably knows about it.
Yes.
All right. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure, you know, even though we don't have to do things that, you know, we remain above board. So if it affects people, we let them know, even if we're not required to. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
We're, we're open and transparent and following state law and city ordinances.
Any further questions for Doug? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Rick, I move we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one thirty seven twenty four.
And a second.
Second.
Bryce with a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that looks unanimous, Sue. All right. Thank you very much. Onto item eight D. This is the Newburgh Library Strategic Plan twenty twenty one twenty twenty six. Good evening, Mr. Worthy. How are you this fine evening?
I am doing very well. Thank you. And good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, Lil Worthy, Library Director. First of all, let me say that this evening, we're only seeking a motion of approval, not a full blown resolution, as I had first assumed. Sue was very courteous in explaining to me that a full resolution was not needful for you to grant approval to our strategic plan and therefore allow me to start to do some of these items. Normally I'd be hosting this presentation with several members of the library advisory board. But under COVID conditions, we decided it'd be easier for me to just do this solo. And with that said, I'd like to strongly thank the volunteers of the library advisory board for their huge efforts this year and especially for their commitment to our institution, one of the places that makes this town so special. And Sue, if you could move to the next slide, please. So first of all, I thought I'd give you the quick rundown. I, I don't often get a lot of airtime here. So just looking at the library, a quick review, we've been the front porch of the community since nineteen eleven. In normal times, we see a hundred and ninety thousand visits a year, three hundred and thirty five thousand checkouts, tons of reference questions, over five hundred programming events, including sixty five in Spanish, despite only having fifteen hours of Spanish language assistance on our staff. Pretty incredible. And ninety thousand items in the collection. So that's a quick overview of who we are. Next slide, please, Sue. The previous strategic plan was in its final stages when I arrived here. And the library advisory board was energized to attempt to solve some long-term problems in this next period. Next slide, please, Sue. During the fall and the spring of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the library advisory board conducted internal brainstorming sessions, all kinds of crazy ideas on large sticky notes. The mission to develop a short list of truly strategic objectives for the next five years. Over lots of work sessions, the ideas were discussed, distilled and ranked using dot matrix scoring and other techniques. And during the process, the goals of the city of Newburgh were also weighed into the mix. Next slide, please. A series of public facing town hall meetings and of course focus groups would have been next. And then COVID arrived. So deliberations began on how to survey and get public opinion in without creating an unsafe condition. We obviously rejected open air meetings. There were problems in terms of audibility and so on. We decided to stick with digital survey work to be conducted in Spanish and English. The survey was designed to mimic focus groups and the focus group process by targeting each of the possible strategic goals with a series of related questions. And the results of the survey are gathered in appendix A of the plan. Next slide, please. An analysis of the strategic survey prompted the library advisory board to actually drop three of our possible objectives. They simply did not resonate with the public very well, so we let them go. It reaffirmed overall public support for our top level goals. And in addition, the survey highlighted lots of smaller day-to-day tasks that we are going to tackle each and every month, which were not really strategic, but the, the things we're going to do anyway. The abbreviated history of the unserved library area as a point of, of information is also found in appendix B. If you want to gain more information about how we got to this sort of library desert that exists all around us. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to do a kind of a Cliff Notes visit to our objectives. So first of all, around sustainability, and in each case I've related it to the relevant council goals. We are hoping to have the atrium assessed by a professional architecture firm with a follow-on task of fixing the problem before the structure fails. Following on from that, design a solution to flash flooding that has affected the children's room and evaluate the amphitheater and stairs for future improvements. Notably, A two and A three are more likely to be follow-on and tasks perhaps in the next five-year plan, whereas A one is very immediate. Next slide, please. Around service and diversity, equity and inclusion, three goals were identified based upon our community outreach and awareness. We desire to let all of our residents understand more fully the digital services that we have to create a collection development plan that reflects increased remote usage and moves that into the center of the plan rather than being an add-on. And to design and pilot a program to increase access to technology for patrons outside of the library. And we're already starting that work with our checkout hotspots that will be rolling out very soon. Next slide, please. Another objective related to service in DEI, three goals. And this is one of the reasons why I wanted to come to council this evening. It's beyond the boundaries of my job description to do outreach to Dundee unless you guys think that that's appropriate. We would like that. We would like to perform a study in conjunction with CCRLS, that's the library district, to define costs. We'd like to survey out of boundary residents. We'd like to develop multiple service level options and present options to the stakeholders for consideration with a goal of bringing more people into the library family who currently don't have any library access whatsoever. Next slide, please. Around diversity, equity and inclusion, four goals were identified. And as you can see, we would like to continue to diversify the library's collection and programming to reflect community demographics. We've already made some strides on that and the expansion of our Spanish language collection. We want to keep that front and center. We want to continue to support all of the city initiatives related to leveling the playing field for people who have typically been underserved. We would like to develop a policy procedure that allows equitable access to our Braille printing service. And we would like to conduct accessibility audits of the library's physical and virtual spaces. Next slide, please, Sue. Costs, benefits and risks. Objective A will cost a sizable sum of money to complete, but the funds to commission architectural discovery have already been located via the carpet replacement fund in Fund Thirty Two. The carpet is great. We do not need to replace the carpet. You can't buy carpet like that anymore, honestly. The city faces substantial exposure to litigation if the atrium or retaining wall should fail while patrons are using the stair wall. Repairs will become more expensive over time. And once we move to the actual build stage, the library has a proven track record of raising money to augment city funds. For example, the library was able to raise half a million dollars for the Making Room to Read project. So we feel confident that this objective will not fall solely on the city. New slide, please. With council approval, the city of Dundee can be invited to join the CCRLS family of libraries there by extending service to underserved communities at no cost to the city and also expanding our footprint out throughout the majority of the rest of the school district. Service extension would help vulnerable communities in the local area who are in that school district. But they have no access to adult library services, which particularly impacts preschoolers. Many of the other elements in the strategic plan are revenue neutral and only impact staff time to develop the needed policy or service provisions. Next slide, please, Sue. So the staff respectfully recommends that you approve the library strategic plan, and I would love to take questions at this time.
Stephanie, it looks like you have a question.
I don't have a question as much as I have some statements that it has been so clear throughout this COVID process that the library and all the staff in it have such a heart for the community. The work has been exceptional. I, it's, it's really a testament to how hard the library staff has worked that this, this particular city organization has pivoted so well and has done so much for the community. So I really applaud that. And it's so clear with all the programs that you've rolled out and all the things that you're doing, that all of the staff have really been involved in that process. And I would love to see the building look the way we know the staff is on the inside. So I certainly would love to see all of this happen. And I really think if we, if we really access the people that are outside of our city limits with being able to provide services for them, it does so much good for the kids that go to our schools, for our preschoolers, for all the, the folks in our community. So I think it's really important that we take the steps to sort of expand the services that we have to outside of just the immediate city. So thank you very much for this.
Nice.
Everything Stephanie just said, and I, it's been my dream to bring in the outskirts of the city. I mean, they, they are our people too, right? They, they spend money here. They're, they're part of who we are and part of what makes us Newburgh. So I am so happy to hear that. And, you know, I don't, if it's cost neutral, my, it's, it's bigger, it's bigger in more than making money, making friends and helping children should be our goal, even those who live outside our city limits. So thank you so much, Will.
Bryce.
Following Denise's structure, yes, to what Stephanie said, yes, to what Denise said. And if I read your, the fiscal impact correctly, you said it's somewhere in the range of $200,000 to $300,000. With, with more accuracy coming after you engage with the architectural discovery analysis. Is that, is that right, Will?
Yes. So I had informally reached out to a friend of mine that's an architect. And she explained that she expected this sort of project to have a final price tag of about $250,000. But we have the money to do the discovery. And once we have done that discovery, we can start a capital campaign to raise the money that we need to make this happen. And so really the scoping is the part that we can do immediately. There's a rolling carpet fund. It had over $80,000 in it. And the carpet is beautiful. And in fact, if we took the carpet out, there would be howls from the patrons because people love the carpet. And it's a 1980s solid wool blend. You can't buy that anymore. And so that's where the funds would come from for the scoping.
I see. I'm gonna have to check out this carpet. The way you're talking up this, this carpet. I need to take pointers. I need to like talk about my wife. How you talk about this carpet. You just, it's so valuable and beautiful. I love it. Um, so my question, which maybe folks would say is irresponsible in this context, that's fine. What would you do? So you're saying 200, 300, maybe 250. What would you do if you had, let's say, $400,000? Right? I know you're looking to raise funds. The work you're doing is great. Everything I've heard from the presentation earlier around the bundles of books at like a four minutes per bundle pace. I mean, you're doing great work. What could you do or what would the strategic plan look like? If instead of it being worried about fixing failing parts of the building and other things, what would it look like if you could actually dream to create programs that you think the community needs? What would some of those things look like?
Okay, so Fantasyland?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if, if, if a guy came in a new Carnegie, Elon Musk writes me a huge check, right? Okay, so what I would do is with of course, the approval of the planning department and of course, the approval of the city manager, I would demolish the annex and I'd make a performing art stage right there where tunes on Tuesday is that we could all benefit from for cult, for higher level cultural engagement to the whole community. I would put a roof over the current amphitheater, which is unusable because the steps are too high and we might make a children's garden out there as a place to sort of engage with nature and have storytime events in the same location. I would also wire up the whole cultural plaza for wifi with long distance projectors. So the whole area would become one giant hotspot.
Hmm, I love that. Um, I mean, my guess is like a lot of folks were busy. We're trying to survive ice storms and all these sorts of things. Should you happen to find extra space in time? I would love to see, it doesn't have to be a super formalized thing, but something that outlines some of what you said, especially as we get into financial planning. Because a lot of that is dope, great work that serves our community. And I would, I would be glad to work with you and champion some of these things for our community. Cause it's good. I love it. So yeah, if you, if you find that time, let me know. Cause it's some good stuff you're doing. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, mate.
Okay, anyone else? Other comments? Stephanie.
Hear me out. I know you love that carpet, but my husband was born and raised in Newburgh. And he would pay top dollar for a small like piece of that carpet. So if you need a fundraiser and you're willing to give up that carpet, I know a lot of families that would take a doormat made out of that carpet. So.
I, I shall bear that in mind if we ever get to that juncture.
Well, look what happened at PDX airport. There was an uproar when they took that carpet out. It was a, it was, it was a problem. So yeah. Will, I've said this to you before, and I think I've sent you a couple of notes. I know people have reached out to me and just have applauded how well you've done with the library and how things, you know, namely this COVID business and just, you know, for a lot of people, it's not, it's their real lifeline. It's a real jewel. You know, people that I know that read five or six books a week, it seems. And so anyway, so thank you for that. And the only question I have is, did you happen to notice in Six Nations that Scotland beat England? Did you happen to notice that?
That, that did not avoid my notice.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought so there, mate. I wouldn't have thought so.
As I, as I did say, Honorable Mayor, rugby is not in my future anymore. I don't heal fast enough to play rugby anymore.
No, it's certainly not in my future either, except from the sideline of the pitch. But anyway, there we go. Anybody else? Anything else for Will? All right. Yep, we're good. I think we're good. All right. So we.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I was gonna, I was gonna make the motion. Sorry. I thought you were moving on without it. Okay. I moved to approve the Newburgh Library Strategic Plan for 2021 through 2026 as recommended by the Advisory Board.
Second.
Third.
Denise with the second, I believe. All right.
Denise, a dream. Wait, can we also add, can maybe not technically do this, but I, I'm, I'm not kidding. Well, we'd love to see like pending like maybe an appendix C or something of what sort of Fantasyland might look like. Yeah, there's A, B, and appendix C of what Fantasyland would look like.
I, I'm certainly, especially when the current economic times get a little better. I'm certainly open to looking at all the things we can keep doing to make a community better because having a sense of place is why I moved to Newburgh and left Hillsborough where there was no sense of place. And there I broke the rule. I named another community on the feed.
That's fair. I mean, I say, put it in. We can obviously say no, given the economic realities. But it would, I would love to see it in there if it doesn't create too much work for you and your staff.
I, I will certainly get some more ideas together of the sort I've discussed and I'm, and I would love to meet again with you folks and particularly in person one day.
Okay, awesome. But for the matter at hand, we'll, we'll go with what we've got maybe, and then come back to the, the, the future thoughts. How's that? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that is unanimous. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you to the, to the advisory board and to all of your volunteers and staff. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have, right, we're on to, no, thank you. We're off to item number nine. This is council business. Any council committee reports? Or anything of the sort?
I just make a public service announcement. Shelter in Newburgh, the emergency shelter. In the spirit of everything going on and really, we really, really, really need volunteers right now. So anyone listening at home, we're trying to keep the shelter open nightly. We kept it open all weekend during the ice storm during the day as well. And we have a pretty big distribution list of volunteers that have volunteered in the last year or so, but we're just not getting a lot of takers. So it's really resulted in a couple of people doing it every night. So just hoping to get some more people. We're going to do a question and answer for volunteers in the next couple of days here. So look for that on Facebook and you can get some of your questions answered there. And it's a really, really special group of people. It's been really great. The shout out to Cosmic and the PD, they've been really great to work with, with this. And I'm just really, really grateful for all the community support we've had.
What kind of shifts are you looking for, Elise?
So they're broken up into, they can be broken up into four hour shifts. So really like eight to 12, 12 to four, four to eight. You can say the whole time if you want. Eight PM to eight AM though.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Anything else, folks? Mike.
Yeah. So counselors, I've been talking to the mayor and to Dan, and it's my understanding that next, the next council meeting, which will be March 1st, we're going to be talking about transportation. Well, one thing I want to bring up to the council and that is the Elliott Road project. And so if any of you have not gone out there and actually looked at that road, I've been contacted by several people that live out there. And I've actually gone out there and looked. I've seen the survey stakes. I would encourage you to go out there and look and see what the results, if we move ahead with that, is going to be. I've got some ideas that I'd like to talk to all of you about. So I just wanted to let you know ahead of time that you can go out there and look at that project and look at the survey states. I think it would be helpful.
And so for clarification here from Dan or James, if, if we were to bring up the subject of Elliott Road again, how would we do that? And what would, what would that entail, I guess?
I guess it's, it's a hard question to answer, just because I think it's probably a question to, in some ways like what would, what the intent of the council would be in bringing it up, I suppose, you know, the project, I think the project team would like to check in before we proceed with some steps that would be the next few in line. And you know, so I think that there's a desire by staff to bring it forward. So I can check on the timing of that. I don't know, James, if you have, have a more specific thought on, on what that might look like, but from my perspective, I mean, I think, you know, as I said, the staff would like to, you know, before there's a lot more time spent, you know, there's, you know, they've gone through design and some of those kinds of things and would like to check in, I think.
And just for point of clarification, Mike, you know, a lot of us have walked that road and gone out there and met with, with different people on that street. So it's not that we have not been engaged in the process, but we'd be happy to have a conversation, I think. And have also done the work behind it.
Sure. I'm just, I was just bringing it up. You know, I haven't personally talked to each, each of you about it. So I don't know. I was just bringing up the, the question.
I think Dan, Dan's right that it kind of depends on what the, what the council wants to do as far as that discussion is concerned. I can say that, you know, based on the, on the scope and the content of the Elliott Road project, there are certain milestones where I would look for, and Dan has already, you know, been, been helping or, you know, driving this, look for staff to provide kind of an update to the council as far as what is occurring. And I think that will be coming in short order. And so there will be some opportunities to, to get a, to get a download on where things stand as far as status and, and potential discussions will break further.
To, to clarify, Mike, and not to like drag on the meeting or to force you to have to maybe disclose before you're ready. Say, you know, you're just going to bring up the question to clarify is like the, the question to like ask the council to readdress the decision that had already been made?
Yes, I am asking the council to take a look at it and, and maybe, maybe look at it from a different perspective.
All right.
I mean, I, you know, I don't mind revisiting things, but I did my due diligence in making my decision about this. And if we're going to ask others to do their research, I would invite you to maybe contact Roy Gathercole and, and walk that with him in his wheelchair. My kids go to school over there. So if you wanted to think about it in terms of kids riding their bikes to the three schools that have access by that road, I think, you know, we've had these conversations. And I, you know, for myself, I've done my due diligence because that is a road that is traveled very often for my family. And we have kids at that, at those schools. So, you know, if we're, we're talking about perspectives, I'd also invite you to maybe get in contact with some other folks that, that use that road, particularly those that have mobility issues or small kids. I think that's important to add to the discussion.
Oh, absolutely. And I have ideas about that too. So sure.
All right. But the, I mean, I think the, the, as, as Dan mentioned and James mentioned, I mean, I think, you know, certainly on, on any large project, I guess, an update from staff would probably be a good thing if we could, if we could schedule that in the relatively near term. And then maybe that'll give a forum to, to discuss some of these concerns and, and, and staff can also tell you what they did and, and sort of the public outreach and all that kind of thing as well, which is, which is an important part of this. So. Does that sound all right, you think, or?
Sure.
It worked. Dan, does that work, you think?
Yeah, I think we can schedule it. And I was just looking to see from emails with Karen and engineering kind of what their timeframe was. But yeah, I'll send an email to the whole council and just share when we think we might be able to get that put forward. So y'all know before you have to wait and find out on which agenda.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Very good. Any, anything else, folks? I'll just say that, that our friend here, Jules, has been directly involved now with the ExWitty Task Force and the, and the outreach to Latino parents group with the, the school district. The first one was held here recently. And Jules, what did you think? How'd it go?
I think it went well. And you know, earlier we were talking about how the water bills had some of the Spanish information. And I think from this initial meeting, like we found out what the Latinx community thinks the city is actually involved, what involved in. And also what I found really interesting is that they're actually interested in being a part of like these types of meetings. Except traditionally, what it looks like for a lot of their experience is very different than how we do it. We have a very formal process. So maybe like trying to break some of the down, some of those barriers. And they asked if these were like these meetings were, if there was an interpreter available for them there. And so we said, you had to put in a request. So those sorts of things are asking questions. They're definitely involved. And I was surprised there was what like, I want to say probably like 20 parents at this meeting. And a lot of these folks were actually at work. So they had their Zoom camera on and they're working and you see multiple parents in the background. So I think it just gives you an idea that, you know, they're definitely interested. They're engaged. Maybe we as a city haven't been the most approachable. And I think we're definitely working towards those. So I'm just really happy to be a part of this project and then working along with Ines and Esa as well.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I can't thank you enough for, for doing that. Actually, Jules, I think it's, I think it's, it's great. So there we go. And well, more, more to come on that as we, as more of these listening sessions are rolled out. So. All right. Yes, Elise.
One more thing. So on vaccines, I didn't say this during the city manager update, but so the county has, has been doing a really great job advocating at the state level. And we are seeing an increase in our allocations to the county this last week. So not crazy, but we're seeing an increase. So we are a pod for Newburgh. I know TDFNR has been doing one as well. And then there's two in McMinville right now. So Prove Newburgh will be doing Thursdays for dose one and Sunday for dose two. We're doing about 300 right now at a time, but we're able to do probably upwards of about 1,000 once we get to that level of allocation. So the best way to sign up is on the county website. And I will send Dan that link if they want to. A place he wants to put that on our city website. It's actually really easy. It's just a registration form. So anyone can do it at any time. And then it will be pushed to you based on your eligibility group of when you can sign up. So you'll get a sign up genius. And then for those community members that don't have email or secure internet access, there's a phone number at the county that you can call for registration support. So you will be directed to the pod that is nearest to your house. So it's working really well. We're finally moving on to 80 plus this week. So super, super, super grateful for Lindsay Manfred's direction from the, from the county.
Wonderful. Yeah. And if we can, you know, maybe back to the, the shelter. And once you have that information, the Q and A and all, if we could, we could probably help push that out as well. If you, if you got it, we can get it out to our networks as well, which would be, which would be great. All right. What else have we got, folks? All righty. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do, right? And staff, you know, I don't, I don't know that you all get thanked often enough, to be honest with you. I really don't. I mean, sometimes, you know, it's thankless. It's, it's the city. It's just whatever. Thank you, right? Thank you for all that you do. And all of you volunteers, thank you for what you do. So we live in a good, a nice place as Will so eloquently mentioned. And we're lucky to be here. So thank you. Have a great night and we'll see you March 1st, if not before. Okay. Bye bye. So thank you. Have a great night and we'll see you March 1st, if not before. Okay, bye bye.